All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, Administration has no additions.
Okay, could I have someone move the agenda, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Delegations. I don't think you're the staffs or...
(laughing).
I apologize.
Brendan Fast, I'm one of the corporals that watch commander in town. I'm also the acting opera-- sorry, operations and CO.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Devon asked me to attend as he has a personal matter that he has to attend to. He apologizes. I won't take much of your time, I'll get right into it. So in October, the detachment had three members off duty sick, two of which will be off until at least December 1st. One of these members is due to transfer in late December. The detachment is still waiting for our sergeant to arrive. At this point, we do not have a timeline for his arrival. The GIS positions, the corporal and the constable, have not been filled as of yet, but we are hoping to hear something soon. Constable Cherry, a new addition to the detachment, will arrive in High Level at the end of November and will be working this December. Brady has a family, and his wife is a nurse, and will be working in town at the High Level Hospital. Persons crimes are up 3.8% from the same time period last year, January to October. Property crimes is at a 4% increase for the same time period, and total criminal code is at a 5.5% increase when compared to January of last year. Basically, what it breaks down to is 22 more person crime offenses, 49 more property crime offenses, and a total of 133 more criminal code offenses. Our prisoner count for the year is currently 2,292, unless it's been risen since a couple hours ago, which I'm sure it has. Comparable to High Prairie, which is a similar-sized detachment, they have 651. Fort Vermillion has 394, and Chateaix has 541. That's all I have. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Is there any questions counsel would like to ask? So, I have one. The sergeant.
Yes.
He's coming from where here?
He's coming from Fort McMurray.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's no timeline?
No, not that I'm aware of, unfortunately. Yeah, I've been speaking to him, I know him personally, but unfortunately, we don't have a timeline, so...
Thank you. Any questions? No?
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to call upon Danny Penny to come and talk to us.
Mm-hmm.
Welcome.
Couple of months ago, I put in a complaint about the dust from the Drax pellet plant. I haven't heard nothing back. It's not an everyday thing, but most days, like it's, I can't park nothing outside. You can, there's days I can't even work outside. It's a fine dust, it's plugging up to heater vents in my truck, it's, it's, there's days you can't even breathe outside, so... Like, I'm all for industry, but it's, it's out of control there. And I did talk to other people with shops in the area, they notice it, but nobody's saying nothing. So like, if I was going to get a list of names or whatever, but I figured I'd start out just doing, filling out a complaint thing, and I think that, like, there's things they can do about it, they can put in a bag house or whatever, but until somebody complains, they're not gonna do nothing, so...
What do you know what, Dan?
Bag house, I think it's called. But it's terrible, like, everything in my yard is covered. It's like, like, there's days you can't breathe outside, so... It's affecting my health, my property, and there's lots in the air. I didn't talk to everyone, but I talked to a few people, and they agree, but just nobody is saying nothing, so... And like I say, I'm all for industry, whatever, but it's affecting my property, my health, and whatever, so... There's, there's days, it's, it's pretty bad. It's in your eyes, it's, so...
All right.
And like, I was going to get a petition going or whatever, which I'm sure everyone in the area would sign it, but I figured I'd try this first.
You haven't talked to anybody from Drax?
No, I don't feel that's my, you know, I paid my taxes to whatever. I don't think that's my part to have to go directly to them.
I didn't realize that Pelotene plants put out that much.
Oh, it's, it's, if you drive by there, it kind of looks like steam. It's not, it's dust, so...
All right. Well, we'll look into it for you.
Okay, that would be 100%.
And it's back to you.
Yep. So, yeah, we'll see what happens, and if not, I'll be back again. Okay.
Does anybody from counsel have a question? No? Okay, thank you.
Yep, very good.
Approval of the minutes, the October 23 regular council meeting. Does somebody want to move the minutes, please? Thank you, Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carry. The October 23 organizational meeting. If there's no errors, could somebody move those, please? Counselor Librian, thank you, all in favor? The RCMP detachment statistics, does anybody want to...
I'll move for information.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. I emailed my report to everybody. If you have any questions, I will answer them. No questions, all right. Could I have someone move, please? Counselor Jessman, thank you, all in favor? Carry. Council committees, deputy mayor.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Anderson.
On November 1st, I attended the Golden Rain Society's monthly meeting. And on November 8th, I attended the Northern Light CEC meeting, it was held at noon.
What, what's the CEC?
Community education.
Yeah, I know, who are they up to?
Well, basically, not a whole lot. They're trying to kind of get reorganized. They, they are looking for members for the CEC. They're, they're lacking in, in membership to get some direction, so they're going to approach businesses and the Indigenous people for representation, so that they can kind of get a better idea of what the communities want. There's money available to do quite a bit of stuff, but they don't want to put a program on it and find out it isn't attended, so that's kind of where we sit at the moment, struggling even to have quorum for meetings, so...
Is that just members from High Level or all over?
No, Mackenzie County, the bands are, can also have membership. Indigenous people at large, if they want to fill out the forms and, because there is a certain criteria they require, but, yep.
Do you know if the college is running a health carey program?
Right now, I don't believe they are. I think they're, they did have a, what do they call it, Nurses LPN, last year, and I don't think they've started another one now yet. I can inquire, I think our next meeting's next month, so I'll inquire a little more as to what, because they don't, they're not, they don't have their, their welding course is not on at the moment, and neither is your carpentry course, so...
I, I'm asking because Mackenzie or Arborial Housing or Alberta Health Service, since we'll be looking for health careys, and just wondering...
Well, I had good success on the last one, from what I understand, but I don't think they've put this one or another one together yet to put out there, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Lambert.
On October 24th and November 1st, I had meetings with the Chamber, they're pretty similar, so I'll just go over the both of them. We discussed Midnight Madness, we have set it up this year for December 1st. We decided to do it a separate day instead of doing it on Black Friday, which is November 24th, just to create its own unique event for the town. With that, we will be doing the, we won't be doing, but we'll be partnering with the Egg Society on the parade and the tree lighting, will be on November 25th. And we were also discussing Membership Drive, we're gonna talk and try and work with the Administration on setting up a renewal plan for memberships with possibly business licenses, or just let me, just to get a bit more traction there. As for Midnight Madness as well, we are looking at setting out, we had a meeting with the, with the seniors, and we want to set up a senior shopping event on the, at the same day, December 1st, but it'll be more so from 12 to 5:00 PM, and we have booked the handy van for seniors with mobility issues, so we can drive them around if they need. And then, other than that, we are also trying to set up a home-based business location. It's actually working with Counselor Welkey on that, and we are moving the fireplace location from the downtown square towards, actually between the fire hall and Fields. That was it for the Chamber, and then on October 26, I went to my first MFTA meeting, just talked about the summer. They had one of their interactive kiosks at the museum, they had a lot of positive feedback on that, and they are also working right now with Mighty Peace Tourism and Peace River, developing a river guide to, it's actually a little guide for people that want to navigate the river, go canoeing on it, to start from Peace River all the way up to here. So they're starting that in Peace River, and then gonna work on, on this side over here. And then, other than that, for MFTA, they are hosting a meet and greet on, in High Level on 28th, Fort Vermillion on 27th, and then their AGM will be in, on the 30th in La Crete. And that is all I have to report for committees.
The home-based business, is that just for Midnight Madness, or is that forever?
No, that is just for Midnight Madness.
Okay.
They, they have their monthly market throughout the wintertime, but we're, we're trying to find a space downtown, so that they can actually be a part of Midnight Madness and not have to go off into, sometimes they go to the industrial area, the Friendship Center, small other buildings like that, so we're trying to find a central location for them on main streets, people can just walk as they're going up and down the street for when they're shopping.
And did you say you were moving the fire?
Yeah, so instead of having it in the main square in front of Traditions, it's gonna be moved over between the fire hall and Fields.
Oh.
More of a central location between the stores.
Any other questions for Counselor Lambert? Okay, thank you. Counselor Librian.
I attended the library board's Stronger Together Conference in Edmonton on November 9th, and other than that, I have nothing to report. It's, it was a board trustee training course with the library, that the larger library boards in Alberta put on together, a very good course, really well-attended. I was only there for the one day, the trustee portion of it, but it was three days long, and apparently, the other two days were chock-full of really great stuff, so it'd be interesting to hear what Amanda has to say, so...
All right, thank you. Terry Jessman, Counselor Jessman.
There we go. Okay, cool. November 1st, I attended the AGM meeting for the High Level Community Policing Society. We were successful in having members for complete boards for another year, and on May the, or November the 8th, May, November the 8th, I attended the regular High Level Community Policing Society monthly meeting. Due to the, the heavy workload of a lot of the members, we had to postpone our AGM to November, so we're up and moving and going forward, so it's been a busy, busy season for the Child Advocacy Center, and looking forward to, we have a new police officer representing the force, the detachment, she's been very engaged at the CAC, and so we're pretty excited about that.
Who is the new?
(laughing) Kara.
This is...
Yeah. But yeah, she's been, she's been involved in pretty near all the, the families that have attended there, and she's been very aggressive with helping with Julie and other things there.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move council reports, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Under old business... Oh, sorry, administrative reports, the action list, council action list, is there any questions? I noticed under the supporting addictions, there was a, a scheduled meeting between the Town of High Level and the Denny Dog and Minister Wilson, has that been set up? Williams?
So I, I put it into my administrative report.
Madam Mayor, it, I have spoken with their EDO ASLS, and he was gonna talk to his counsel, and wants we can get a date, if they would be willing to invite Minister Williams to the meeting as well, and I did pass that on to Minister Wilson's, or William's office, so it's, all parties have been informed, we'll just see if we can get it together.
Okay.
And just in case it comes up, they did offer to meet with us this evening, so, for supper. So Jordan and I felt that that would not give enough time with our schedule, so he's gonna find another date.
Any other questions from the action list? Okay, could I have someone move the action list, please, then? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Upcoming events. Any questions? The MTC flag raising was canceled, unfortunately.
Yes, it was, but the flag is up, so...
Yes, it was very nice. Any other questions? Could I have someone move it then? Well, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Lambert.
I just wanted to know if we could get the additions that I was speaking about earlier in my report, just with the Midnight Madness and the parade?
Yeah, we can add those to this list.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have someone move the list with those changes?
I'll move for it.
Counselor Anderson, thank you, all in favor? Carry. The monthly reports to council. Counselor Jessman.
A question for Clark, just regarding the emergency evacuation center, where are we, where are we at with that, or the permit expires this month, is it?
Oh, the, the initial permit for the initial build, yeah, that would, we would just let that lapse until council's chosen a new configuration. Jen and I met with, with the architect this morning, and they have actually put together a, a modular type of arrangement using the old, or at least based on the old design. So it's, it's actually, we were quite surprised that they were able to do that, and they're looking at, so it would, if the area that would be offices, conference rooms, meeting rooms, and that would be stick-built, and then they're looking at a, likely a metal frame structure, that each of the parts would then be put on to it, so what they want to do is just tweak that down, bring it to council, make sure council's okay with the concept, and then they'll go out and do the cost estimates on it.
That was a, that was a great update, but I was asking, I mean, I appreciate that, I did want to hear that, but I was asking about the ATCO, sorry, for the evacuation...
Oh, not our evacuation center, their evacuation.
Sorry.
Just, I'll pass that over to Director Gavin.
Yes, that's...
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. The last update I have is from November 8th, with the manager of the NDA Corporation reaching out to me on the drop-dead date that it needs to be removed, as per the development permit, it is November 30th, and they do not have, as far as I'm aware, a decision from their council as to what they want to do. They did inquire at the end of October about winterizing the camp and leaving it there for the winter, which would involve extending the development permit. It comes with a few other considerations, particularly for security and then safety around fire as well, so we'd have to have some more inspections done if it was to be extended, so I am gonna follow up again this week to see if decision has been made, but as yet, as far as I'm aware, no decision to date.
So, I thought the permit lapsed and the DNA did not have money to continue operating in this...
The development permit's valid until November 30th.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, so we could extend it if they apply for an extension, but they haven't applied yet.
We could.
Yes, or could not.
Thank you.
There are options.
Oh, sorry.
Do we, do we know if there's people staying in there? I've, I've heard reports of some people staying there from time to time, but is there rooms being used?
I believe there have been and may still be people in there. I mean, while it's staffed and operational, they are permitted to do that till the 30th, but not beyond that date at this time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I just, my, my last conversation with EDO ASLS is that even if they do winterize it and carry it over, the cost of keeping that camp is substantial, because of the security and fire watch requirements on it, and as law, as far as he was aware, Indigenous Services Canada has not come up with any money to allow them to extend that camp, so that was, so there, the funding they did receive did include the demobilization or the taking down of that camp on November 30th, and that's last, last we've heard from the Denny.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Lambert.
Have we heard any feedback from the contractor on how the garbage disposal went last week with the new system?
He's surprisingly well, and people were very compliant, they, he did have an extra body, and he followed the truck. He said other than cans being turned sideways and stuff, and it's just a matter of informing people, so he had a little sticky pad, and he, they'd stick it on top and say this was the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, he said that very few problems, until they blew the hydraulic hose and had to go back to the old system about three-quarters of the way through. So, he doesn't tend to have it all working for tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
And just a reminder, I know this won't go out fast enough for anybody, but put the cans out in the morning, because they do morning pickups now, so...
So, the, the cans that are, I, I know they're tied to the houses, but there's empty houses, abandoned houses, there's cans in front of those houses. Are we gonna pick them up, or...
So, Madam Mayor, the Finance Department went through and looked for all water accounts, so anybody who has an active utilities account, and there were, I think, seven last week with the Wednesday pickup, that there are no active water accounts, so once they're done distributing, they're gonna go back and pick those up, and then we'll double-check the Thursday ones.
Any other questions on, or... I had a question on the airport, on the pappy lights, are they working now?
As of this morning, they're still having problems with intermittent flickering on it. The engineer and the electrician are trying to track down the problem.
So, are we in compliance if they're not working, or...
All we, I think what they've done is they've NOTAM the airport, in other words, it's just a note to pilots that there could be, that the pappy lights are flickering, it's not like they're completely dark, it just looks like they're sending messages into space, but they are working on the issue. We also had a couple of lights that weren't quite in the right spot, and we're getting that remediated.
So, airplanes have landing lights, all right?
Oh, yeah, and these are just, I mean, they're just to give notice to the, to the pilots as they're coming in, so it's just, it's, it's, they're, they're not sure what it was, they thought it was regulators, and they're still trying to track it down.
Okay, so the other thing with the airport was the, the ALFA building software, is this not working because it's an old computer, or...
Well, I'll give that to Director Phillips.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel, so the Alpha invoicing software, it is working. The only issue with the software in our airport building is the internet service and the server, so right now, we're in the works upgrading to the supernet, so hopefully, in the next, I'd say, couple of months, everything should be, it's just, it's just we don't have the capacity to do a proper upload of that software for our manager and the administration computers there. But it is working in our office, so administer, our finance uses it to do all the invoicing, and NAV Canada updates that software, and, and we use that here in the office.
So Luke's not entering it up the airport?
No, and he never, yeah, no, he never, he never did, it's just we wanted all of the computers to have that software, just in case we can utilize administration work on, on that end.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just to add to that, Director Phillips has been working with Bell Canada. NAV Canada had Bell run fiber optic into that facility several months ago, and NAV Canada has not hooked it up, however, Bell is willing to do so for us, so we'll have it for our purposes.
Okay.
And that's what she said, probably within the next two months, we'll have fiber optic at the airport.
Counselor Lambert.
Just a question for Director Gavin, do we have any update on our applications for the CMHC project and the rural renewal stream?
No, still nothing yet. They told me on, when we, they're treating our final submission date as October 2nd, and the processing timeline is about eight weeks, so I'm hoping by the end of the month or beginning of December, we will have a decision.
And that's for the renewal stream, or for...
That's for the renewal stream, so to become a designated community, and then the other one, the mortgage one, they replied to me, I think it was 10 or 12 days ago, and still being processed, so it's a waiting game.
Okay, thank you.
On the operations report, which number is it? 633? It said that you, somebody met with the engineers for the downtown water and sewer upgrade, and they're looking for clarification on a number of issues. What are those? What are those issues?
Director Gavin and I have been working on that project. Actually, a lot of the clarification has to do with numbering and setting it up. Haley, did you mind updating where we're at with the cammering and the?
Yes, so for the sanitary sewer lines, we had CCTV footage collected back in 2022. We just got access to that raw data last week, so I went through those on Saturday and compiled the footage for the engineers to go through. They're essentially trying to make sure that the scope of the roadway project, that the infrastructure beneath it is obviously in a decent working order, and that we're budgeting enough for any of those replacements. The manholes, we did drop some cameras down and took some pictures of, so we don't have, like, great condition assessments of those, but we have some visual. We have some really good footage for the sanitary sewers with condition assessments for each one, so most of them are looking good. There are two or three on 100 Street and 100 Ave, the portion between 99th Street and 100th Street is not looking good. So, we're still working progress with them. We've had a bit of backs and forwards between the data or shape files that we have versus the data we've received from the consultants, so we're just trying to marry that up and make sure that we're getting the engineers the information they need to, you know, proceed, I guess, with this design. And then a few of them on the surface are accesses, so to a couple of the businesses, so looking at, removing a couple of driveways, which we need to reach out to the landowners directly on that, so we will be doing that, and then just getting ready for this grant application. And then lighting, we made, we had a couple of chats on the lighting side as well, outside the fire hall, so that will be coming back to council, I believe.
Next week.
Next week. And then another item that we have on our agenda later today, so a few things, but we're getting through it.
So, Madam Mayor, I may have worded that bad, but the clarification that the engineer's looking for is from within his own, his own people. He wasn't sure where some of the project, part of that project's at.
And speaking of manholes, what is happening, like, I just have a question, like, how often does operations check the sewage manholes? Because the sewer backed up on my street, and they came to my door and told me that we were the second one that had that sort of backup, that somebody was putting broom handles or sticks or whatever down the manholes, and they were blocking the manholes and making the sewers back up.
So, yeah, the problem they discovered on your street was that broom handles had been, there were several of them, had been stuffed down the holes of the manholes themselves, which of course was creating a blockage that the other stuff that comes through the sanitary sewer system was catching up in. So generally, they do, they do flush the manholes in areas that are problem areas, areas where we tend to get grease or silt buildup, but generally in a residential area, we only do it when there's a problem, because they're generally fairly clean. But yeah, this is, I wouldn't call it vandalism, but it was, it was an anomaly.
Well, they said there was another one exactly the same a couple of weeks before.
Just around the corner, I believe, yeah.
Anyways, I was just wondering how often they checked them, because it's quite a mess when it backs up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and again, it's not something that's expected, and usually what we're watching for is siltation or grease blockages, not broom handles.
All right, is there any other questions? Oh, Deputy Mayor?
I'm just going back to the airport, have we had any response from NavCanada regarding our inquiry that they didn't consult with us?
So, all we, we have no, we have received no correspondence from NavCanada or from the Minister's Office. We reached out to NavCanada to find out where, or where the notice would be that they've told us that they are cutting back their hours, and we have not had a response back from NavCanada, so we'll follow up with that again. There's been no official word that those hours have been changed.
Okay, could I have somebody move the monthly report if there's no more questions? Counselor Lambert, all in favor, carried. So, moving on to all business, 12-1 request for decision for brush truck.
Madam Mayor, Director Schmidt will address that issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As stated in the report, the project to replace Brush 1 is nearing its completion. The truck is currently being built, we're expecting delivery before year end. There's been a couple of delays, but we're sorting that out with the, with the supplier right now, but we are expecting within the next six to eight weeks that that project will be, will be completely finished. That being said, Brush 1 is currently ready to be disposed of. That was the original plan with that truck, as it is well past its service life for, for us. We're looking for direction from council on how we would like to dispose that as per policy, so there are no other uses for that truck within, within the town usage, so we have an option to put it up for sealed bid and try and sell it, or the other option is to donate it as we have in, with past trucks. So, there are a couple of charitable organizations that, that will take those trucks, but administration does believe that the truck has some value for sale. Current trucks out there right now are selling between $20,000 and $40,000 for a truck of that vintage, as long as everything is operational. So, we're not expecting to get $40,000 out of it, but if we do, if we do decide to sell it, administration's suggesting that council places a minimum bid on the truck at $20,000. So, everything's operational on the truck, as far as the pump and so on, some of the doors are sticky to open and close, but it is a 23-year-old truck, and it's got about 50,000 kilometers on it, so it does, we, administration does believe it has some value for sale.
Did you say 50,000?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
And it's 23 years old?
Yeah, that truck didn't, doesn't get a lot of miles, it's a lot of hard miles and a lot of idle time, like, it sits and runs for hours and hours and hours, so that the truck hours are a lot higher.
Counselor? Counselor Lambert? Deputy Mayor?
I'll move alternative one.
Do you have a?
Considering the, the new one costs nine times that amount, I think we should get something out of it.
Okay, is there the discussion from council? All in favor of one?
Just to note, we only paid $80,000 for 23 years ago, so we're, 25% back is pretty good.
That's a lot of money 20 years ago. Okay, on to new business, request for decision for one for life.
Madam Mayor, there's been a couple of things, or developments since we put the package out on Friday. I have spoken with Darrell Dirks, the CEO of Mackenzie County, and Mackenzie County is, he said that he would take it to his council. The only thing he requested was that they add the Blue Hills Tompkins landing area to the water study. My understanding is the county's had some issues trying to get water into that area, and some families truck over 100 kilometers in order to get water. So, we had no problem doing that, it's, it's to look at water supply for the region. That did up the price to $165, it's still 100% covered for Water for Life, and the county passed a motion this morning to jointly apply with the Towne High Level.
So, what, what about the First Nations?
So, we had a meeting scheduled today, our associated engineering had set it up, they've made contact with ISK, and we should have a meeting with them sometime this, this week. So, they're particularly interested in the Beaver First Nation and some of the water problems they have had, and that, of course, if you bring their line around there, that would also help the DNA, because we're supplying water to the DNA.
So, should they not be a partner on the application then?
They don't have to be for us to get 100% funding, but if they do become involved, of course, down the line, if we go to construction or engineering on this, that ISK could definitely help, and I just, what I mentioned in my RFD, error, RFD, is that what we would do is create a working group with the county, the First Nations involved, and ourselves to advise the engineer on this.
Any questions from council? Yes?
No questions, I was just going to move, recommendation number one.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Carried. Application for the regional, sorry, for the arena kitchen.
Madam Mayor, Director Clark will address that issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the Towne High Level usually leases out the arena kitchen from October 1st till March 31st at a minimum fee of $750. The past two years, we've really struggled in getting someone to lease the kitchen, so after some conversations with council, we are suggesting that we, that we waive the fee for the arena, or perhaps put out a subsidy for, an incentive for a new tenant for the arena kitchen.
Have we had any interest in?
We've had two people reach out, one of them had some criteria that they wanted followed, like, no bringing in coffee from other businesses, they also want to offer alcohol, so I kind of asked them to put, like, put in a proposal and, like, explain how we're going to do that, and then he didn't. We had another person reach out, we set up a meeting, and then she didn't follow through with the meeting, so that's all we've gotten so far.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Lambert?
Depending on what we go with here, is it going to be advertised? Yeah, okay, perfect. I would like to move for alternative one, I, after thinking about it a bit more, I don't think we should be paying someone to be there, I think the cost of utilities and having someone there alone is, is a pretty good offer, so I'm going to take over that.
Anybody else? I agree with you, like, the cost of us paying utilities plus not charging them?
So?
Yes.
What's your motion again?
I'd like to move a recommendation, oh, sorry, alternative number one.
Yes, to remove the monthly fee? I'm, I'm in agreement with that, yeah. I have a question, though, would it be feasible to, well, obviously may not, because we're not getting any kind of interest, but to have a kind of a one-time, you rent the facility for 600 bucks and that's your season, it, it's yours for the, for the season sort of thing, rather than just giving it to them, because how would you, so if you got three applications with being free to run the kitchen, who then, or how then, do you make that choice?
I think we would make the choice by looking at the menu and see, like, there are certain criteria, like, we're asking them to be open a certain amount of hours, also to offer some healthy options, so that could help us in making the choice, but I do agree that, yeah, maybe offering, like, a one-time fee of $600 for the season might be a better option.
You know, might even be, you know, two, I'm not saying 600, but, you know, 250 bucks or whatever, just something so that they have a little skin in the game sort of thing that, that makes them more wanting to do it, right? They have some, something to recover at least. Like, I can say waiving the monthly fee for sure.
That takes away all of, you know, like, their utility overhead plus. Is that your motion?
I, I can put that motion forward, I don't know what the fee would be, though.
I don't know, what had we discussed last meeting?
So, you guys did throw out a $800 monthly subsidy, the arena does rent out for $150 a day, like, right now, so that's something to go on, I don't.
Well, I'll, I'll put in my motion that any interested party could take out the kitchen on a one-time $250 fee for the season. And see how that goes.
You were recommending number one, Josh?
I did, but I'm sure we can recommend.
Well, is that a friendly amendment?
I'm sure we can amend it.
Will you take that friendly amendment?
Yes, of course.
So, Josh, so you want, yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter who puts motion forward, anyway?
But he had put it on the floor.
Right, right. So, you'll take that with, with the amendment?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion as it is? Those opposed? Carried. 13-3 certific, certification, certification of recognition of health and safety audit.
Madam Mayor, it is the year of our external audit cycle for our health and safety program. Mr. McLean has asked if we could have two councils, counselors who might be interested in participating. It's a 30 to 40-minute interview, and I have some scheduling here, and it's anytime the last three, the next three days of this week, or Monday or Tuesday next week, and there's a number of times that are open. So, more counselors can participate if they wish, but we're only looking for two.
Counselor Librian, Counselor Lambert? Any others want to participate? All right, those two, yes.
What's involved?
It's, that's.
I'm not in the building here, I'm not in any of the other buildings, so on a safety audit, I don't know what's expected, so how do you interview me as an, as a, a person to?
External to the organization.
Right, to cover off an audit.
So, this, this is just a, this is the first year that this has been a requirement, that elected officials participate in municipal core audits. Most of the questions will be your awareness of the program. You know, are you aware of the program, how are you made aware of the program, that type of thing. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not cer, certain years will take 45 minutes, because you don't have the depth of knowledge of somebody who's attending safety meetings regularly.
And Mark, there's a meditation, and so there, there could be a fair amount of questions around that.
Yeah, they're not going to grill you on your deep knowledge in the Occupational Health and Safety Act, but it, yeah, it'd be, it's, what they're interested in is, is the council aware of our health and safety program, and how have they been made aware of it.
Okay, do you want to motion for the?
Please.
Do I have someone move the motion to send Counsel Anderson, or Counsel Librian and Counsel Lambert?
I'll make that.
Counselor Anderson, thank you, all in favor? Carried. The next one is a briefing note on expressions of appreciation.
Madam Mayor, you had noted that the Tonneau High River had sent a letter and had asked us to present it with, and we had mentioned that time we'd received a number of cards, so Municipal Park Waters has compiled that all together, and we put a little briefing note in on some of the other responses the community put forward, so it's there for council's review and information.
Could I have someone move this, please, for information? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, correspondence for information? Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Jessiman moves for information, all in favor? Carried. Uh, so that will end our public portion of this meeting. And we will move into in camera.